Time's now 6:00 PM. Regular sessions, the Justice and Council is now in session. Science and education are given by the Jan. President of Good Beginnings.
Would you do me a prayer? Tell me, Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you, Father, for the city that we live in. We thank you, Father, for those who serve to make this city great. We pray, oh God, that you would be with us tonight. We pray your presence here, to bring wisdom, you would bring peace, and that you would direct us as we go. So, Lord, we ask your blessing over us now. Thank you for this evening. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have got an award this evening. So, if I can get the library staff to start coming forward. Once again, we have received the Texas Municipal Library Director's Association Achievement of Library Excellence. For those of you who aren't familiar with the award, there are several criteria. Our services to the underserved population, summer reading program. It was several great, great opportunities that we could be used to serve our community. Just another great amenity for our citizens. Our library is top-notch. They provide so many services, and we're really proud of all the work they do. So, I'll present this to the library staff, and Carrie is their interim director. And we'll get a quick... Great job, y'all. Thank you very much. Item 3, consent of agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move for approval of the consent of agenda presented.
Got a motion from Councilmember Gott.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Beck, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right. Item 4, public hearings. Ms. Wagner.
Yes, and Mayor Protam and Council here not to receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing regarding the issuance of obligations for Park and Recreation and Recreation, Betterment and Texoma Health Foundation Park. Not only do we need to hold a public hearing, but we need to authorize the mayor to approve the propositions of obligations for financing the sports and recreation complex. Normally, you don't have to have a public hearing for bonds, but due to special iris regulations when a project is financed for a 501(c)(3), or in this case, where the 501(c)(3) benefits, such as naming rights, the public hearing must be held. Staff recommends holding a public hearing and authorizing the mayor to approve the propositions of obligations.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this agenda? I think now the hearing is closed. Council?
Mayor Protam, I move that we authorize the mayor to approve the proposed issuance of obligation for financing a sports and recreation complex.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Beck.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Gott. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed? All right. Item 5A, receive report on the Adopt a Park/Adopt a Trail Program. Ms. Van.
Hello. Good evening. On January 25th, the Parks and Recreation Board recommended to council for council approval to Adopt a Park, a Adopt a Park program or a Adopt a Trail program. The program will allow citizens and volunteers to assist the city with the upkeep of the parks and trails. As you all know, we're contacted by different local service organizations to do this, and this will be a way for us to recognize them and to keep up with the work that's going on. Not only is it a collaborative effort between the residents and the city, but it'll also help to improve and maintain our parks and trails. It's for neighbors and community groups, and we can kind of scout the limit. We can see what we're going to do with that according to what the groups want to do. We will have, everything will come before us. No one, you know, they'll have to come to our Parks Board to come and do that. So, we're excited about it. The program also increases citizens' awareness and they're proud of our community. So, we think it's a good program, and as well as the Parks Board.
Thank you, Senator. You know, it's pretty amazing. We've seen, you know, our latest example of our citizens and volunteers through the Dog program that we have, and I think we're really fortunate to see so many citizens that want to be plugged in, care about the community, want to see, you know, want to see what they can do to help. I think it speaks volumes about citizens. Anyway, this is a great, great program. Council, questions?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
Council, please. Ken Broldi. Just had a brain freeze. Didn't get to remember your name. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Second, Councilmember Beck. All those in favor? Indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed? Very good. Item 5B, tax credit housing development. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and Councilmembers. As you'll recall, council tabled this item at the February 1st council meeting. Since that time, staff has been researching and coming up with additional information as was requested. So, I'd like to summarize some of those additional findings and new information, and then provide a recommendation. First off, just want to point out, one of the developers has asked to withdraw his request for a resolution of support. That was for the Cypress Creek Apartment Homes. Honor Carrington was the developer on that one. And so, they've withdrawn, not asking for support this time. So, there's three projects remaining, really. Two of the remaining three projects are the, two of them are the age-restricted developments, and their locations, again, we still continue to have concerns with conflicts with either zoning regulations or previous development agreements that the city has approved. And those two are Abington Senior Estates and residences at Loy Lake. That leaves the final project, which is Parkdale Villas. So, I want to talk a little bit about that one and focus in on that. This is the project that's located at the northeast corner of Parkdale Lane and 120. This project is partially located on retail property that is zoned retail right now. And so, one of our concerns was the possibility of losing out on future sales tax revenue as a result of rezoning it to multifamily to accommodate the development. In looking at the small retail pad, and I emphasize "small" because it really would take a large sum, we think about $6 million worth of sales, on that site to generate enough tax revenue to offset what it would generate in ad lorm tax as a multifamily project. And so, because it's a smaller side and restricted as far as what retail can develop there, that sort of has resolved our concern from that perspective. Another perspective is that any new housing tax credit project within Dennison is going to have impacts on our existing housing tax credit project, which is Heritage Park, and on any existing rental units within the city, especially some of the substandard housing that we have in the core of Dennison that we're really trying to raise the bar on and help to get renovated and brought up to minimum property standards. And so, adding new quality affordable units to our housing portfolio, if you will, may raise that bar for those other developments and require them and encourage them to start making some renovations, really raise the bar in terms of what they're maintaining those units at. So, that competition could lead to an overall increase in the quality of housing in Dennison. This project, Parkdale Villas, does represent an increase in the quality of what's there now in terms of the mobile home units, the substandard units that are there now, and the prospect of adding new multifamily units there certainly would be an improvement in terms of value and quality. There will be significant off-site infrastructure challenges with this. Water, sewer, streets. The streets there need to be brought up to standard, and water and sewer extensions, et cetera. And so, certainly, we'll work with the developer to hone in on those costs and make sure that they're done in, per our standards and specs. And that'll be something that really will have to take place after the resolution, if you were to approve a resolution of support for that development. They'd also have to go through an annexation and rezoning stages of development approval as well. So, but with that information, staff does recommend that the council support the Parkdale Villas project and provide a resolution of support for their housing tax credit project. I can certainly answer any other questions the council may have. I'll piggyback a little bit on Judd's comments there. The, between staff and kind of our council subcommittee and our development, our development folks at DDA, we have spent a tremendous amount of time over the last few weeks, few months, and then, you know, of course, our first, the first project that came along, you know, a year or two ago. And we have, we have spent a number of hours becoming educated. These are not simple developments. You know, there is a lot of things to consider with them. And at the end of the day, you know, there are several, several ways to look at these, and I know that at one point, there was a kind of a thought, "Well, why don't you just support them all and see who receives, you know, the tax credits?" And one of the issues that I think the subcommittee as well as staff had with that is we really don't want, we want to keep our decision local of where we want to have multifamily in our community. And so, with that, I think that's one of the reasons why we did so much due diligence on the operators, the sites, and kind of what each had to offer. And so, I think when it came down to it, we really wanted to support, you know, just the developments that we felt had the best use of property and provided the most benefit to the citizens. And, you know, Judd had a great, great comment. With this type of development, you are replacing, you know, a mobile home lot or a trailer park, however you want to refer to it, and it will put some pressure. We have a, I don't want to say a significant amount of substandard housing that's being used as rental stock, but we have seen that there are a lot of areas that need improvement, and this would certainly put pressure on, on some of those landlords to improve their property and bring up the standard at which our citizens are able to find, provide, you know, or find rental dwellings. So, anyway, I know we've got several folks that want to speak to this item. I'm going to let the folks speak who were not at, I'm going to let the folks speak first who were not at the previous meeting. And I would say, you know, kind of in light of where staff is, if you, if you've got something that you want to add from last council, you know, we hashed through a lot of this at our last council meeting. If you've got something new you want to add from the previous meeting, great. If not, you know, please limit your time so we can, because we've got a number of folks who want to speak. We'll limit everybody's time to two minutes, but... Dr. Tyson? If you would, state your name and address for, for the record, please, sir.
Dr. John Tyson, 601 South Littles Lane, Denison, Texas. The notes for this are not this. They're actually the smaller ones. Along that same line, for the council members and staff, and the interested citizens that are here, as an outsider of the mood here in 1969, I've had a hot opportunity to observe the hits and misses that have been made in Sherman and Dennison both. And along that same line, I've had the opportunity to see the growth that's come from Dallas northward. Now, that, that growth along the, along 75 has been, it's been inevitable. It's been slow, in a sense. It's been in the best interest, I think, of the communities to have the best businesses that can possibly be attracted, you know, for those areas. In my opinion, Dennison is kind of like a growing child. You don't want to feed that child too much sugar and caffeine and get it charging around, whereas if you come in and you feed that child with some good basic, basic food items, you get a grow, you get a steady growth that's good, and involves and prevents having a shifting of development that then later you'll look back and you say, "You know, that really wasn't, that wasn't the best-faced decision for that area." Again, I want to commend the council for their extended investigation and considerations of the projects. And in that same line, along those best interests, you can, you can think ahead as to what's going to happen along in the future, along the tollway that will be coming north, and along the further development of 75 versus the changes that we've seen over on Texoma Parkway when that development leaves. And I don't want us to end up with, I don't want us to end up with 75 looking like Texoma Parkway. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ginger McGuire? If you would, may I state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Ginger McGuire. I'm here to speak about Abington Senior Estates. I'm from Austin, Texas. Do you want my full address?
Please, please.
7607 Creek Bluff Drive, Austin, Texas. And just wanted to thank you all for every consideration that you've given to the projects here in Dennison. I will say we're disappointed that we're not the one that's being recommended, or one of them that's being recommended. We did encourage council to support all of the tax credit applications. We look forward to possibly working with you at another time or in a nearby community. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions about the tax credit process. It is a complicated process, and we're happy to share any information that we have.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Councilmember Beck's got a question?
I've got a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe a point. My understanding, since we haven't had a new tax credit project in 10 years, the current scoring, we don't know if that's going to change from year to year, I guess, how the score, so if this other project doesn't get the tax credits this year, then I assume if the scoring stays the same, since it's been a while since we've had some, then we still may be a city that would be real attractive to us in the future. Is that the case? Do you understand it, or am I wrong in my...
Well, the answer is we really don't know, because the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs changes the scoring from time to time, and they put their priorities and their policy priorities into that scoring criteria. Also, they work with the legislature to, or the legislature works with them, really, to come up with some of the legislative priorities that they believe that maybe the tax credits are overlooking. So, they direct and redirect from time to time from the legislature. We would like to think that we would know, you know, from year to year, what is going to remain competitive, but the truth is, we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any more questions?
Sean Brady? If you would, state your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. My name's Sean Brady, with Ray Ventures Group, 2964 Peachtree Road Northwest, Suite 200, Atlanta, Georgia, 30305. I'm also here representing Abington Senior Estates. And as Ginger mentioned, we're certainly disappointed in the recommendation that's being made, but I did, I just want to say thank you to the council for considering resolution of support for one of the tax credit developments. It's a great, great program, and I think it'll do a lot of good for a lot of people here in Dennison. And we're very thankful also to be here in the community. We know there's definitely a need. And, you know, it's unfortunate because there is, there never has been a ward of affordable senior housing here in Dennison ever. And, you know, you've got a couple applicants here that could have provided that, but, you know, frankly, there's a lot of people across the, across the board that could use the help. So, thank you. I really do appreciate the council's consideration and support for one of these projects. I think it'll, I think it'll do you guys a lot of good, and as Ginger said, we're happy to answer your questions you guys might have, but enjoy the work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dan Algar. New Rock Companies, 4925 Greenville Avenue, Dallas. I'm here to talk about the residence of Loy Lake, which is another seniors property that's on the list. Our site's currently zoned MF2. It's not in any overlays. Site plan, site plan's in place for 200 many units of apartments. When we met with staff, I know the staff a couple of times, they pointed out the objections that were made when that site was zoned, mostly from the neighbors to the north. They were mostly concerned about multi-story buildings down in their backyard. So, when we did our site plan, we put a single-family back, oh, sorry, single-story back there, three-story on Loy Lake. All of our access is from Loy Lake. So, we sent out flyers to the neighborhood. We had a neighborhood meeting. We got one response, asking for any of the fences back there, which we are. And then, basically, we got support for the project, predominantly because they were seniors and people thought that Dennison needs a seniors' housing. Now, the staff stated that there's no means restricted market rate. I asked to see that document. I still have never got it, but the seller gave me the 380 agreement. We don't intend on using the 380 agreement. We don't intend on asking for tax base. I'm not sure that our site is restricted market rate. If it is, I still haven't seen the document. So, in summary, we're doing fewer number of units, two-thirds of what's approved on this site. Seniors only. Excuse me, I got a cough, and I'm trying not to cough. Seniors only. The, which is the biggest need here? Just FYI, in 2015, the average social security income was like $15,000. That's who could afford to live in this property. We reached out to the neighborhood. We got no opposition. We're experienced developer, just like everybody who's made applications here. You have any affordable housing here, we'd appreciate the council considering this property. It's already zoned seniors, and it's something we think there's a need for. Questions?
Judd, can we clarify on the zoning?
Sure. The, there's nothing in the zoning, obviously, that restricts. It just, it's strictly just land use, multifamily land use. When that site was rezoned, the development agreement that came, that went in conjunction with that, really, the intent of that was for market rate apartments. And so, I think that, at least in my mind, that represented the intent of the rezoning, and it's obviously not written in the zoning ordinance, but that development agreement was approved by council, and that was the intent, the purpose of that rezoning.
The development agreement tied to 380 agreement?
Yeah, that's the same.
So, if we don't use the 380 agreement, that does not apply?
Sure.
For the, for, just as a refresher, so, when we went through, when we went through the process, and we did have a tremendous amount of opposition when we went through that, that, we went through that zoning process, and it was the, you know, the commitment of council at that time was that, as part of this, as part of this, that we would not have a tax credit property, or that we would not support a tax credit property on that, on that site. And we, at the time, we were heavily trying to incentivize a new market rate development, which they have not exercised their, their agreement. And subsequent to that, we've got a new developer who is, who's broken ground on a market rate over at the 69175 site. So, just as, so everyone has a refresher on kind of how that process went. Questions? Thank you, sir. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Stromsted, Sherman, Texas. Put that in line for old Sherman, Texas. One question first, and I think it's directed at Judd. Tell me the specific reason why you're turning down my site?
I'm recommending that council consider the future land use there, which is, well, actually, the current land use, which is not land use, the current zoning, which is retail. I believe that's in the long-term interest of the city to keep that as retail. It's a major interchange in the city, and, and long-term, that's a good land use for the city.
Okay, fair enough. To the record, my father rezoned that property to retail. It was residential. He rezoned it retail in the '90s. So, originally, that property was retail. Now, the next question I have, and I appreciate y'all tabling the motion two weeks ago, going back and doing the research. Did y'all factor in that you put in a new exit ramp that bypasses my tract of land? How is that going to impact retail, which is what y'all want for that tract of land? It's bypassing my property. So, how can it be for retail use in future retail development when you're putting an exit ramp past my property? You limit the ability of this property. It only has one use at this point, once that exit ramp gets in. If you get off at the Crawford Street exit now, where are you going? You're going to housing. It's the only place you're going. There is no retail. Now, you're going to give somebody an option to bypass a stop sign to go on and exit in further south from 120 to go to 120 to where all the retail development is. That, when you bypass my property, you've killed it. There is no retail. And I mean, it's a pipe dream if you think there's retail. And so, to look at the future uses retail is useless. So, I would beg you to reconsider this project. A year ago, you guys approved an apartment complex there. The neighborhood didn't want it. Now, the neighborhood does want it, and believe me, they don't want retail. They're going to tell you they don't want retail. You know, they were concerned about traffic. They were concerned about lighting. They were concerned about noise. And so, the best use is retail, and you've got a neighborhood that's going to be upset. When a year ago, you supported your neighborhood and said no to the project. Got no problem with that. But here we are, a year later, a better project because it's single-story seniors, which we have no senior housing. And in the Sunday paper, Grayson County Community Shift Focus to Multi-Housing to Meet Demand. Headlines in the paper. You know, that's where the need is. We need rooftops in Dennison, Texas. We need them for job, for workforce. We need them for seniors. Dennison was voted one of the best retirement communities in the country, but yet we have no senior housing. Why? Here's an opportunity, first off, for a developer to come in and spend $20 million. Create jobs. Create increased tax base for this community. Residents support it. It cost the city of Dennison that much. Zero. The roads are in place. The sewer's in place. The water's in place. All the utilities are in place. There is no improvements that have to be done, except when the developers in for shaping the property. I would urge you to reconsider and approve this project because it's in the best interest of Dennison. Thank you.
And if I can just clarify, the ramp reversal is not going to bypass the property. It's adding a new ramp north of the site. The existing ramp's still going to be in place, so folks will still get off of Crawford Street and have an opportunity to shop there long-term.
But, Judd, the new bypass, the new exit ramp does pass my property.
Was that mostly driven by text dot? I mean, we didn't, we don't really have the ability as Dennison to say we wanted to go right here past this property. I thought text dot was supposed to kind of put that up.
Hold on, let's clarify. Judd, what you're saying is we are not, the existing ramp for Crawford will remain.
Yes, that's correct.
It's simply bring the ramp back from 120 further.
Yes.
So, so there is a new ramp, the old ramp, the stop sign will still be in place.
And again, as to my text dot money, this put in that ramp, that's not the city's money to put in the ramp?
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, that, they've worked with us, but ultimately, it's their decision where to place the ramps.
Park Street we just approved, that was a senior, that's a senior housing development.
Yes.
But it's market rate?
Yes, correct.
David?
David, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please, sir. David Davis, 37 Village Green, Dennison, Texas. Thank y'all for, you know, tabling a meeting two weeks ago, and allow us to, you know, y'all to do some research, and allow us to come back and talk with you again. I'm here to speak about the Abington Estates. I'm obviously in favor of any development for housing and stuff that we can have in Dennison, as you all know that we need it. But the reason why I'm here about Abington Estates is for a couple of reasons. There's more than a couple, but one, it's very close to my neighborhood that I live in now. Thank y'all for, you know, tabling the meeting two weeks ago and allow us to, you know, y'all to do some research and allow us to come back and talk with you again. I'm here to speak about the Abington Estates. I'm obviously in favor of any development for housing and stuff that we can have in Dennison, as you all know, if we need it. But the reason why I'm here about Abington Estates is for a couple of reasons, more than a couple, but one, it's very close to my neighborhood that I live in now. Very two, number two, I think that I don't want something to be overlooked in this particular area. So one of, one of the items that I have here is if you look on the map here, you notice that you have the Grayson house there in the corner. And then you've got some homes there to the north of this project. You know, I think if you really look at this, this project will tie in the homes and this Grayson place together. You know, the back half of this property, the east half of this property, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe is already zoned for residential. So I mean, if you look at just the west, the west section there, you know, one, how much retail are you gonna get out of that? Two, you're gonna get some retail that's totally surrounded, you know, by the east half to be residential, then you got the Grayson place, and then you got some homes to the north. So I, I think we're really missing that, you know, there's not much retail space there that could be really, you know, utilized. And, and if you are gonna put retail space there, what kind of retail are we talking about? Because you gotta remember, you got homes to the north, you can have homes there on the east, and you got a nursing home right there on the corner there. You know, this being a senior project of fifty-five and above, you know, you could have a very well situation where, you know, somebody might be in this housing, you know, they might be fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, be in this housing and their spouse could, you know, be where they get to the point where they have to go to a nursing home. And how convenient would it be to them be able to live in the, the housing right next door to where their spouse may wind up and they be basically still side by side? So let's think about that. That's, you know, that's something to be considered there. You know, the other thing is, is Sean Brady constructed a neighborhood meeting back in December and, you know, twenty to twenty-five of neighbors from the surrounding area showed up at this meeting. And every question that people had or concerned, him and his staff was able to answer those questions. And that's why you probably didn't see from your last meeting, you didn't see people get up here and oppose this project like they did a year ago for the other project. Why? Because Sean Brady and his staff was able to conduct that meeting, answer people's questions and ease their concern. And basically, to me, if they're not showing up to oppose it, then a lot of those people that would have opposed, you know, from last year, felt comfortable with this project. You know, the thing we also have to remember is there's many places, if you get from, from the Dennison City Limits at six ninety-one all the way to the Oklahoma border, there's a lot of places there along seventy-five that you can develop for retail and they're still vacant. There's a lot of areas. So let's give this opportunity, a chance to tie in, you know, from the nursing home to the, the housing and tie this in, that one little area. You've even got between, once you get past these houses, you've got that whole stretch of land that's open all the way up to that church that could have some retail. I mean, this one little section is not gonna make or break your retail base, but it could collect you some taxes and allow opportunity for citizens to move to Dennison or to remain in Dennison and spend their tax dollars here. You know, last year, the city was behind this particular land being developed as a project. The, the biggest thing there was it was gonna be, you know, three stories and it was gonna be open to, you know, all ages. So I think a lot of those concerns with it being fifty-five or older has, you know, satisfied a lot of the, the surrounding neighbors as to that not being a problem anymore. And you're gonna collect full taxes, you know, just because it's a tax credit development doesn't mean that they're gonna get, you know.
Right.
Short on taxes.
Right.
And we know that the city can use those taxes. The last thing I'll leave you with, is I've always heard a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush. Well, right now, before you, you have three birds in the hand. I'm just asking you to, to don't let this one fly away.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Gary, Gary Lacy. State your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Lacy, seven four one three Silver Lake, Rowlett, Texas, seven five zero eight nine. My name's Gary Lacy and I'm with AmTex Housing. I'd like to thank the council, staff, for the opportunity to be here in Dennison. We've enjoyed it. I kinda wanted to break down and give you a little bit of information on, you know, how we arrived here, how AmCal and AmTex arrived in the city of Dennison, Dennison, Seattle. We look at, you know, all the demographic indicators, the labor statistics, the population and the economic development potential for the area. And that's pretty much it. In this particular case, as I started researching Dennison, you know, something else popped up and, and that's the other two developments, the market rate developments. So we're very aware of the fact of, you know, how these, these developments, especially when they're so close to, to each other as far as development, whether it be any of the tax credit deals. And so we, we looked at the, at the market rate and I read through that Butler Report, or at least the brief that were online about it, and we get it. We get the upscale market rate. We understand it. We think it's a fit. Your, your income is going up and your housing is staying flat. I think with the hospital, the, you know, huge hospital that's been built to bring, you know, provide housing for those professional workers, it's a no-brainer. That was, it's, but it's not our population. We do have a percentage market rate, but it's not our population. And the market rate developer wouldn't wanna draw from our population as far as the affordable units because then you put the people that are, that, that need the affordable housing in a situations where they're having to spend almost everything that they're making on their rent. And that's, that's really defeating the purpose. What's, what is being set up there is those tenants are being set up to fail, the developer's being set up to fail with somebody that can't pay the rent, not, not the entire project, but just, you know, tenant by tenant. So I, I just wanted to point that out. The, the elderly project that's also market rate, I get it. We, I did an end-up study on the elderly population here in Dennison and what was needed. We decided the best direction for us to go was towards a family development.
Can you give everybody about two minutes, though?
Okay.
So that, that brings us up to our population, the affordable population. And that, that's a good fit because you're creating new housing for the market rate, new housing for the elderly, and then fifty-nine percent of your population in the city of Dennison, surrounding areas makes less than fifty thousand dollars a year. Housing stock is getting older and so where are these people gonna live? They, they play a vital role in the employment of the community and so we think it's a good fit. I'll be able to, questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanna speak to the DDA? Questions? Oh, sorry.
I didn't have cards.
Okay, just if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Sherry Brancy, twenty-five zero two Renaissance Circle in Dennison. And I'm from the other side of these issues for the tax credit apartments. We already have two and that's why I was late. I was out cleaning. I'm also the maid service there, but I just don't think Dennison can support any more of these. I mean, we've, I've been there every day since April and we still don't have the cash flow and the, you know, the population to fill those two up. I mean, so in my thinking, we have enough empty buildings around Dennison already for whatever reason. And if you put too many of those here, then you're gonna have more empty buildings. I mean, I'm just stating the facts. I mean, I'm from Dennison, have always lived here and love it, but if you saturate that market, then everybody loses. So that's just from the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Emails?
I will.
Okay. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
David Dutcher, chair at the eighteen Village Green Court in Dennison area. I'd like to be opposed to the Abington Senior Estates also. I've been talking to Rosa's Cafe, they're out in Lubbock, Texas, about bringing a nice big restaurant up into the Dennison Sherman area. They're, they're looking at it. I don't know what they have plans for that. Also, racetrack, I mean, Douglas Distrib and Walmart pretty much control all the gas swing you buy around here, whether you know it or not. So racetrack would be a real prime piece to go there. And whether there's an exit ramp there or not, I don't think it makes one bit of difference. I mean, you get off Crawford and go right through that stop sign. On the other side of the interstate, you have that, I guess it's called Abbey Lane. It's a little narrow, pretty little tree-lined street. There's not a whole lot of room for development on the west side. The east side has a whole lot more acreage on that. So I'd like to say that all you're doing is moving people from the east side of Dennison that were gonna move over to the west side of Dennison. And I think all you're doing is just trading dollars. I'd like to say that we're opposed to that.
Last call. Anybody else? Questions from council? Discussion from council? Questions for staff? You know, a couple, a couple of dugs on Meg, while you're saying, just so we're, just so we're clear, seniors, the, in the fifty-five and older, no one under fifty-five can, can rent there, but in the non-age restricted, which is the one, which is one of the ones that the staff is recommending, seniors can live there. So just as a, and as a, just as a comment, with whatever the, whatever the council's pleasure is on this, anybody can make application for this property. You know, we're simply adding resolution and support for it. So we're not preventing anybody from making application. Certainly with the way their points are scored, it would not, it would not be favorable for them, but we're not preventing anybody from making application. We're simply, you know, if we, if we choose not to support them, that's not preventing them from, from applying, but it, it does score against them on their, on their points. Just a couple of clarifications. Questions, council?
Just a statement. I think I wanna commend the staff and DDA for all the work they've done in the past two weeks. Council backed me in having this tabled and I think we've worked hard to get it better than the time we've had and to review all the projects. And all these meetings we've had the last two weeks have been looking at all the projects, not just one in particular, so trying to make sure that we did, like Mayor Proton said earlier, try to keep it local and try to make our decisions where we're gonna have some, have some projects instead of having it left up with outside. In that, if there's not anything else, move to approve resolution support to Parkdale Villas project proposed by AmTex Developments.
Have a motion of council to vake?
Second.
I have a second. Council got all those in favor and gave the aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. We're going to postpone item five C until the conclusion of executive session. With that, council being to executive session pursuant to chapter five five, five five one of Texas, Texas Government Code, assault attorney pending a conflict litigation or conflict settlement of the same, section five five one dot oh seven one. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease or sell or value of real property in public discussion, such as not being vested in the city's bargaining position, section five five one dot oh seven two. And discussion, discuss the appointment, employment, valuation, resignment duties, dispointed dismissal or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, section five five one dot oh seven four.